Oh, man, just cutting that music off is a tough thing to do, especially because I want the tone of the music to carry on into what we're doing today. So, welcome, everybody. My name is Garth Johnson. I'm the Paul Phillips and Sharon Sullivan, curator of ceramics at the Iverson Museum of Art. I believe this is the 13th week of us doing a weekly object study and coming together under the banner of the Iverson in my home to talk about ceramics, to talk about the community, to talk about leading figures within the ceramics field. And that brings me to today's topic. So I had planned on other things for this week's session and last weekend's passing of Clayton Bailey made me realize that it would be really amazing to get people to come together and talk about Clayton's life and his work and his influence. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about what Clayton meant to me, but we are joined by some special guests that I will introduce in a moment. And I know that lots of people who were close to Clayton, his students, people who collaborated with him, close friends, family members are on the call today. And I'm hoping that everyone will get a chance to chime in and make their voices heard and join in this celebration. So to that end, I wanted to give a couple of housekeeping tips. The first one is that there is a chat feature. So use the chat feature to say hello. We are archiving all of the chat with all of the questions and I will be monitoring it as well. So if you'd like to ask a question or make a sort of brief reminiscence, feel free to use that chat feature to do it. The second thing that I want to advise is rather than using the gallery view that shows you a Brady Bunch screen with all of the people who are on the call, if you would go to the presenter view, and I think you'll find that on the upper right hand corner of your screen if you're on a computer, that'll make things easier for you to see the person who's talking. And I'm going to be showing a lot of images and the people who are on the call are going to be talking over images of Clayton's work. And I also have some very special video clips, thanks to the filmmaker Mike Waltz, who's on the call today, and we will bring him on shortly as well. So, without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and start sharing my screen. I also wanted to mention that this week and from here on out, we are going to be also streaming on the Iverson's Facebook page. So I think if you go to facebook.com/iversonmuseumofart, you can see this exact video streaming. We also archive all of the videos. So if you'd like to share a link to this video with someone who was not able to make it, and I know some people close to Clayton were not able to make it this week, I encourage you to go to www.everson.org and you can find all of the streaming, or I'm sorry, all of the archived versions of the talks. Alright, so let me go into screen sharing mode. Okay, so as always, the Iverson is doing a range of programming while the museum is not open to the public, although I will say that New York City following this weekend or New York State is going to enter the third wave of reopening and the Iverson and museums across the state are going to be in that fourth wave. So we are trying to figure out what it looks like to welcome guests back into the museum. But in the meantime, I promise that I will be here every week doing a session and you can go to www.everson.org and check out programming from the other curators, virtual tours and interviews with artists in our community. I also want to remind everybody about the Iverson's amazing digital archives. So if you were working on a research project, if you'd like to know more about the Iverson's collection, go to www.everson.org and go to the collections subsection and you will find the ceramic database there. And finally, I want to put in a plug for an upcoming auction for the Craft Emergency Relief Fund, SURF Plus. Jeffrey Spawn of the Jeffrey Spawn Gallery is putting this amazing fundraiser together. I believe there are more than 350 pieces that have been generously donated mainly by collectors and by dealers like Dwayne Reed, Leslie Farren, many, many others have donated pieces to this auction. All of the proceeds will go to the Craft Emergency Relief Fund where they will directly benefit artists and they have earmarked at least half of those grants for artists in underserved communities and underserved artists and artists of color as well. So I wanted to mention that to that end, we will not be doing the normal Friday afternoon Eastern Time conversation, but I'm going to be hosting a virtual cocktail party preview for the auction. So that's going to be Thursday, June 25th at 7:00. So if you've been a regular guest and joining us every week at this regular time, I will be doing the session on Thursday, June 5th instead. So pay attention to social media and I will put in some more plugs for that. But we'll be talking with some of the artists who made some of the pieces. We'll be talking to collectors. We'll be talking to Cornelia Carey, the director of SURF Plus, about the amazing work that they do. And most importantly, we will be giving you a direct preview of the auction items. Alright, so let's turn to the task at hand, which is celebrating the life and celebrating the work of Clayton Bailey. And I will say right here that out of the many, many hundreds of artists who have served as mentors and friends and who've played a part in my life, Clayton Bailey is the most important to me. He was a rare mixture of being an incredible thoughtful conceptual artist. He was an airtight crafts person, although he said something that has always stuck with me when I was asking him about the broad range of the way that he treats his subject is that each piece only got the level of craftsmanship that the piece needed. So he was very thoughtful about how each of the pieces were made. He grew up in the Midwest. He grew up in Wisconsin and he had this incredible work ethic and down-to-earth personality that I could relate to, yet he knew how to turn on the charm and knew how to turn on the style. And finally, my subset of Clayton Baileyology is studying his performances and his pranks in particular and the way that they related to the nut art movement. And we'll talk about nut art and the importance of nut art as well. So, very briefly, I want to mention that some of Clayton Bailey's family members are on the call. Robin Lebus, who is Clayton's daughter, is on the call. And she wanted to make sure that I gave credit to some other people. We will be talking, of course, about his amazing wife, Betty Bailey, in a moment. And Betty was an incredible documentarian and artist in her own right. But the extended members of Clayton's family, let's see. Well, Robin, could I just invite you on to talk about your brother Kurt and your granddaughters and what Clayton meant to you as a father and a grandfather to your children? Let's see, you might have to unmute if you're there.
There we go. Okay, there we go. Thank you. Thank you, Garth, and thank you, everybody, for joining the call today. And there are several that haven't been able to join with my immediate family, but they will look forward to your replay, Garth. Thank you again for doing this. Yeah, my dad was definitely an inspiration to many and his Instagram has been blown up with wonderful comments and memories of my father and artwork and from all his collectors and fans. So it's been, you know, overwhelming, to say the least. My brother Kurt lives in Crockett and also survived is my, both my daughters, Bailey Lebus and Sydney Lebus. And they both live in LA. Unfortunately, they couldn't join today, but they're here in him's spirit, that's for sure. So they had an amazing lifetime with my father, spending many hours playing in his amusement land that he created for them in his studio, in his backyard. It was like going to Disneyland for the children. They learned how to throw pots at three years old. They built robots with their recycling projects at school with my father. They went on the numerous hikes that they would, that my father would take you on. If you know my father and you visited his studio, he would make you put on some walking shoes and go for a walk up in the hills of Porcosta. And it didn't matter if it was raining. So that he would drag my children through that as well as me and through the poison oak. And, you know, we have great fond memories of doing that and collecting bricks on the bay and making patios throughout his yard, if you've ever visited his studio and yard. But yeah, we all have real heavy hearts right now.
There was one particular nickname that you had emailed to me from your granddaughters, right?
Yes. His nickname was Papa Mustache. So, and that will be his forever remembered name in our family to many, I think. But
So we will pour some mustache oil on the curb for Papa Mustache today.
Yes. And for those of you who don't know, after he cut that mustache off, he actually kept it. And it's in a little box and it's labeled. So, oh, I don't have a picture with me today, but that was one of the items that the Chronicle wanted when they did their nice memorial for my father.
And I do have to compliment that amazing memorial that was in the San Francisco Chronicle. And it warmed my heart as a curator to see that they really led by talking about the nut art phenomenon as well. And with Roy de Forest's retrospective a couple of years ago, it's definitely a term that has sort of picked up in usage.
Yeah.
I wanted to say, we're going to keep things very upbeat and we are going to focus on Clayton's life and his work. But I just wanted to say that I was fortunate enough to be able to visit Clayton when he was in a rehabilitation facility shortly after the stroke that he had a couple of years ago. And Betty was there helping take care of him. And anyone who got to go visit Clayton during his illness, you know, it was shocking. He really had been deprived of most of his speech. He was almost completely paralyzed on one side. But I was completely reassured almost right away when I walked in. Clayton recognized me and was fully present despite all the things that he was dealing with. And I knew the moment that he pulled kind of a shtick that he was doing, that his humor and his intellect survived intact. And what he was doing was he had a completely paralyzed right side, I believe. And he'd be talking to you. And Robin, I don't, I don't know if this was, it was probably something you got to see done over and over again, but he would pick up his hand that he had almost no control over and he would look at it as if it were an alien thing and go, ah, ah, ah. And so that is, I think, a really fond memory of a way that Clayton was using humor to deal with, you know, some dark times in his life.
Yep. Yep. He definitely really tried. And the most recent one that he did was, I was there a couple of weeks ago and with a brand new caregiver. And so he, you know, he's, she's helping him move around and he goes, ah, like she heard him. And the poor lady was mortified. And then he looks up and he starts laughing.
So I encourage everybody, some people are starting to chime in via the comments. Please use the comments robustly because, again, they are archived as well. And I'll be sending Robin and the family a copy of all of the comments that you make. And we'll all have a chance to chime in with some of our favorite Clayton stories. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen again. And we're going to keep looking at images. But if you have something to say, unmute yourself and say it. We can have a conversation while we're talking about these things. And I'll be calling on some of my other guests as well. So before I do share my screen, I want to go ahead and bring on Diana Daniels, who was the curator of Clayton's major retrospective that was at the Crocker Museum of Art. I'm going to ask her to help me talk a little bit about some of the pieces that we're going to be looking at. So Diana, could you unmute yourself and say hi?
Hello, everyone. It's wonderful to be here. I have a fun Clayton story related to the exhibition to share right away with Clayton's oneriness. So dimensions, of course, are very important, especially when you're building special furniture for displaying pieces by him. And I'd call up to get a dimension or double check a dimension. And he, I think he'd just hold the phone away from his ear for a couple of moments and then come back and give me a dimension like he'd gone and measured and he would tell me he was going to measure. But when things arrived, it was clear. He made no measurements. So we had to adapt. But I think he had fun doing that to me.
And I got to visit Clayton as he was preparing for the retrospective. And, you know, I know that retrospective meant the world to him. And he spent many years kind of preparing for it. And so we'll talk a little bit about the exhibition as we're looking through the images. And then finally, I'd love for Mike Waltz to say hi very quickly. And Mike is a filmmaker and made an incredible 45-minute documentary about Clayton and his work that included footage that I, as a Clayton Baileyologist self-described, had never seen. So, and Mike, I'll have you as well tell us where we can watch that documentary if we haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, I could put a link in the comments here for anybody who wants to take a look.
Okay, so you can view the entire thing on Vimeo. Mike, do you want to talk about what drew you to chronicling Clayton and his career that led to the documentary?
Well, it was, it was a bit unusual. It was not something that I anticipated. I kind of accidentally stumbled upon Clayton's work. I'm not necessarily in the, that kind of, I'm not really a part of that art world normally. I appreciate it and I, and I love it very much, especially things like, you know, that come from a really unique place such as, you know, what Clayton did. But I, his museum was about 15 minutes from my house. So how I discovered his work was actually on Yelp, which is very strange. Like, it just sort of popped up on Yelp. And I was like, what is this? Who is this guy? And within five minutes of doing some research on him, I was like, I have to make a film about this person. Like, his work is amazing. He's amazing. And so that's kind of how it started. So I kind of came at it from a bit of an outsider perspective, but I quickly grew to really immerse myself in his world. And it really is a world. It's the Clayton Bailey universe with all the characters and the different formats that he would work in. It was, it was, you know, pretty amazing.
Yeah, to put on my pretentious curator hat, I think Clayton pioneered. I was particularly thinking about artists working with science as something that really came to the fore in 1980s. And there was an activist component, I think, to a lot of that. But Clayton was not only doing that, but he was able to sort of parody it at the same time while paying tribute to it. He was, for those of you who don't know, nominated for a Nobel Prize and prized certificate that he got from the Nobel Committee, which is forefronted in the documentary as well. But universe creating was something that Clayton excelled at. So, Mike, I'll encourage you to chime in as I show some of the clips from the documentary to mention any particular reminiscences that you might have about them as well. Okay, so without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and bring up my screen again. Let's see, and I'm going to keep this sort of in this format so that I can zoom and pan and scan through some of the images as I'm working. Trigger warning for everybody, there is going to be kaolithic activity that is chronicled in this chat today. So be alert, we are in a time of a pandemic. So please know that PPE and personal safety was important to Clayton. We talked a little bit about losing an entire generation of artists to lung ailments and lung cancer. And Clayton always, always, always jealously guarded his health and took care of himself. So, Robin, I will encourage you to pop on, you are actually in this photograph, right? This is my very favorite photograph of Clayton. Do you have any particular memories of the time when this photograph was taken?
Well, if I could mention one thing, I was always wondering, when I look at this photograph, how come he's the handsome, good-looking guy? And why do we all look so ugly? But this is one of my favorite photos and I have a copy of this hanging in my house. And I love the rubber grub phase back in the 60s when I was very little. We used to roll on the floor in Vermillion, South Dakota with a whole pile of these rubber grubs that he's holding in his arm. So.
Speaking of Vermillion, South Dakota, so Clayton, he was born in Wisconsin. He taught at University of Wisconsin, Whitewater. And I actually am fortunate enough to personally own a modest piece that came from this Whitewater period. He did a sabbatical replacement for Robert Austin Davis. And he came back and took a position in Vermillion, South Dakota, I think South Dakota State University or North Dakota. And at some point when he was in North Dakota in Vermillion, he did a funk art festival where Maya Peoples Bright and her husband at the time came out along with other artists and did crazy performances and I think spent the better part of a week. Do you have any reminiscences of that particular event in Vermillion, Robin?
You know, other than riding a bicycle and rolling around with rubber grubs, that's pretty much all I can recollect.
My holy grail is that there were multiple TV interviews that they made for the campus TV station. And I've worked with archivists at Vermillion to comb through the holdings of the university. And sadly, I think that that footage has lost its time. But, Mike, I'll have to put you on the trail of lost documentary footage. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and show a quick video clip here. And this one focuses on Betty. And anyone who met Betty, you know, knows that she was as extraordinary as Clayton and that some of the reason for, a huge reason for Clayton's success was Betty's tenacity and Betty's personality. Please tell me if the audio is not sharing, but I believe it should.
Clayton, myself, Betty Bailey, my wife, and Kirk Bailey, our son. Like it or lump it?
Many of these figures here, people here are my friends, my artist friends. And they're looking at my drawings. And this guy's saying, very good. I really like them. And she said, that's not painting. She's a watercolor painter. And I'm just a Grandma Moses, not taking any art classes at all. I just started drawing on my own.
Probably what attracted them together, even from high school, besides just teenage hormones, is the fact that she was a creative individual too. So Betty has this sort of natural vision. And it's not just that it's charming. I think it's more that it's forthright and it seems honest. And it seems, it seems funk. Even after all these decades, it seems, it seems funk.
And so that commentary, of course, was provided by Diana Daniels, who's here with us on the call, who does a really incredible job of giving intellectual heft and art world have to the really amazing fun proceedings of the documentary. And of course, Clayton's son Kurt, Robin's brother, is mentioned. And he has gone into the family business after some time and is now making incredible paintings on his own that I find incredibly compelling. Move on to the next slide. And of course, we can't talk about Clayton without talking about his alter ego, Dr. Gladstone. I was almost hoping that the San Francisco Chronicle, that you would get the obituary to say that Clayton is survived by Dr. Gladstone. And I think we can do some Andy Kaufman-esque planning out here. And I think there should be some Dr. Gladstone sightings out there in the world as well. But talking about persona is something that's very popular in the art world today. And it's something that Clayton was able to very naturally pull off. And he could pull it off with a very, very straight face as well. I'm going to talk in a little bit about some letters that George Gladstone would write to various people in the magazine and the press and the museum world. And both Dr. Gladstone and Clayton Bailey were incredible correspondence artists as well. And I will talk about that. So here we, here we see Dr. Gladstone out in the field with a Bigfoot skeleton. And, you know, I know very well what is important and unusual about the phallic bone for the Bigfoot. Rob and Diana, whoever wants to chime in, would you tell the rest of us, what is unique about a Bigfoot penis bone? Who's going to do it?
Okay, well, what I remember as a, as a worker at the Wonders of the World Museum in Porcosta back in the 70s, and what I learned about the Bigfoot penis is that it was double-jointed and it was able to make U-turns. So I remember being taught that at a very young age.
So a triple-jointed, actually, but it did make the U-turn, which is the thing, according to Clayton, that made Bigfoots exceedingly rare. So that is everybody's biology lesson for the day. Here is an incredible photo. And Nancy Stelven and Nancy Service both sent me some great photos of Clayton in the studio. And I've peppered some photos that I took on my visit to the studio, right as he was preparing for his retrospective at the Crocker. And Diana, here's, I have two photos of the installation. And I was very tickled when I went to visit Clayton. And Clayton couldn't get over talking about the fact is he would tour someone through his garden. And I have to say that when I visited Clayton, and this was one of the things that was the greatest about him, was I think, whether you were someone walking, a filmmaker walking in off the street because you found out about the museum through Yelp, or whether you were visiting important curator, he would pay the same amount of attention to you. And while Clayton was talking to you, you were the only person in the world. And he had this incredible way of making you feel special and making you feel connected. So when I visited him, he was months away from having the preparators from the Crocker with their white gloves come and pick up things from his garden that had been sitting outside for decades, in some cases, to move them into the museum for the retrospective. And he got no end of satisfaction out of thinking about that very formal handling happening. Diana, can you talk a little bit about some of the visual cues that you used and how you adapted the language that Clayton used in both his home and the Museum of Wonders to extend that into the museum space?
We, I'm muted. We We, we knew this was an interesting challenge because I think ideally we would have brought, can you all hear me?
Yes, very well, thank you.
We, ideally, we would have probably brought the entire yard and the entire house into the museum. But there's limits that you're always dealing with. And then we ended up having more space available in the gallery that we could have included more, but then there's crowd control as well. You want to move people through. But the gravitas of the work, it deserved it. He may have had it outside and it was also perfectly situated in the yard. So it felt like it was a discovery that you came across the giant Bigfoot skeleton. Trying to translate that into a museum space with its different standards then became more of a challenge. Earlier, when it was, we were just doing some introductions before we went live. I mentioned that I instilled a little bit of neuroses in Clayton over spiders because we were concerned about how much pestilence we were going to be bringing inside the confines of the museum. And, and California is home to a great, great variety of spiders. They thrive here. And we, all we did was dust and wipe things down, but it was still the white glove treatment. The slide there with the bone age skeleton is case in point of where measurements would have been key. We had built a box display, so it would look as if you had were in a natural history museum encountering this specimen. And it was clear that that box that was built was insufficient. So the intent with the exhibition was to lead people through the space so that they were having sort of this Twilight Zone experience. Or in a way of working through a theme park amusement hall of all of these wondrous oddities that had been collected by the museum versus, you know, created by one man's amazing vision. And in some regards, we were highly successful. In some regards, we could have had more production value. I think on the whole, though, everyone was really entertained. I know that I took a special liberty in breaking with norms for museum practice, which is what Clayton did with his own Museum of Wonders by writing labels that took on the character and language of Clayton and also of the type of amusement or scientific displays that he was using to parody. And I know, I know that was a little bit controversial among other staff members of the Crocker at the time, but the visitor comments made it all worth the heat I took.
Amazing, and I would have expected nothing less. And I also want to put in a big plug for Clayton Bailey's World of Wonders, the book that came out of the exhibition. It remains the definitive document and incredibly useful for other budding Clayton Baileyologists.
Thank you, that's very kind. Clayton was an amazing inspiration.
This is another photo that Nancy Selvin sent me. She wrote an article, I think, for Ceramics Art and Perception. And some of these pieces that are sprinkled through are from her. This is a piece by Tony Natzulis, who is, was not able to be on today. He sends his love to you, Robin, and the family as someone who is very, very close to Clayton. This was a piece that he actually traded with Clayton. And we're going to be seeing a little video clip from Tony so that we can have Tony sort of speaking in his own voice as well. Some more images from that article of Clayton at the studio. And I think anyone who visited him at his studio, you know, got to be shot with cap guns and got to see gizmos and may have been treated to an impromptu jaw harp performance by Clayton as well. I love the look in his eye here. So here I think is actually that clip from Tony talking about Clayton's robots. And I used to live up in Eureka, California, in the far north of California. And I had to fly through the San Francisco airport. And so the exhibition of Clayton's robots at the San Francisco airport was one that I got to see sort of many, many times over the course of it being open.
The way I work is tentative, you know? What if I do this? What if I do that? No, maybe I should change this and do this. By having everything held together with rivets and screws, you can make a lot of modifications. And so the, the robots would utilize some simple electrical device to give them life. And here we have the electrical spark effect. And that's activated by the sounds of people in the room. This guy responds when you walk past him.
Remember Clayton had a gallery, I think it was in San Francisco. And I, I think it was the first time I saw the, the robots and I just fell in love with them. A precious one. And I don't know why, but it had a meat grinder for penis. And so when Clayton and I traded, I said, Clayton, I want a functional penis. So he put this shoe polisher in and it does work. We absolutely love this piece. It's our Romeo.
Bravo. And anyone who gets a chance to go visit Tony Natzulis at his house, it is as much of an art environment as anything that Clayton created as well. But I think that's one of the amazing things about Clayton in his work is that his attention to sort of limitless detail, but his ability to improvise and change and work with things, I think, was something that really sticks with me. And hearing Tony talk about that piece and seeing him actually show the piece and turn on the slightly ribald functional element is incredible. Another thing that I wanted to call attention to too is, you know, Clayton was a mad scientist, but he was not disorganized at all. He was an incredible archivist and he advocated for himself as an artist. So as a budding curator type, and Diana, you can probably speak to this too. Clayton was incredibly easy to work with in, in terms of making information available to you. He made myths and he loved to tell stories that may have gotten sort of blown up and made into myths as they were bandied around. But he was a careful caretaker of his own legacy. There is the first batch, first of two batches is in the Smithsonian at the Archives of American Art, where it has been exhaustively catalogued and is actually very popular for scholars to go through. When I visited the archives, they were actually out because another archivist, a few weeks earlier, had taken them out and gone through them. And they hadn't gotten put back into their regular place yet. But if you ever want to go do research into Clayton and his work and his correspondence in particular, I encourage you to go visit his papers at the Archives of American Art. And I was really glad that Robin told me that the second round is going to be making its way to the archives this fall, I believe. These are just images of the private tour, first private tour that I got of Clayton's home in Crockett and Studio right before the Crocker came to pick them up. You can actually find this group of images on my Flickr website. And maybe I could put up a link to that later on. So a collector that I love, Richard Rogers, who is in Akron, Ohio, is a great lover and collector of Clayton's work and has been making sure that a lot of the pieces that were at the Wonders of the World Museum and Clayton's home are receiving good homes and will find museum collections eventually. I wanted to put in a plug for some of the amazing work that Rick has been able to collect. And Rick is not, not able to be with us on this call right now, but Kat, who's been working as his assistant, helping to catalog the works, I believe, is on the call, but I didn't see you. Kat, are you on the line?
Hello, yes, I, I'm here. And actually, Rick.
I'm still with you guys.
Rick is here, great.
He's here as well.
I made it.
Okay, so Kat, I'm going to bring you up and pin the video here, Rick. So say hi to the assembled crowd. And Rick has a few treats and one particular one that I asked. I believe that Clayton's burping bowls are the quintessential object that contains almost every string of DNA that I want in a Clayton Bailey piece. Sort of his love of gadgets and science, his love of the natural world. And then sort of his link to P T Barnum and Flim Flamery a little bit as well. And so, Rick, you actually own one of these burping bowl pieces. And many of us have not actually gotten to see them function because a lot of museums have them, but are too chicken hearted to actually work and plug them in.
We, we have one actually plugged in here. I'm not sure it's fully functional. There's, there's actually two, looks like two airports that go in the bowl and one of them is not hooked up. And I don't know, I'm going to need some advice at some point to get it fully functional. But we can show it to you right here. It's on you and chat if you.
This is such a good piece. And will you describe, here we go. So Diana, will you actually describe the elaborate, elaborate technology that goes into making this piece work? What, what is the secret of the burping bowl?
Air pressure.
And where, what is the gadget that that air pressure comes from?
I know that you have to have the water level, I remember that you have to have the water level at the exact right amount. If it's too, tad too low, then you don't have the right pressure equilibrium. If it's a tad too high, then it won't work. But there's little, there are those little holes that he's talking about, they're a little gunked up are key to it. And it's, it's just so simple. It's the same technology behind Clayton's patented drinking cup that'll spray you in the face.
And I think he would literally just get aquarium bubblers, right? That are the things. Hose and an aquarium bubbler like makes all of this possible, but.
There you go.
Yeah, amazing. So I will say, you know, maybe it's not fine, fine tuned, but it is working and that is such an amazing piece. And at the Crocker retrospective, it had some of the burping bowls actually working, right?
Oh, absolutely. In fact, Sydney and Bailey donated one of his best ones. It's on the, the cover of the catalog to the Crocker Art Museum. It has the needle poked into the brain and it is fantastic. The piece here that Kat has was also in the exhibition.
So yeah, such an incredible piece. Rick and Kat, I'm going to invite you back toward the end of our session because there is another piece in Rick's collection that bears getting a viewing and it will be, I think, the first time that this piece has been activated, certainly since Clayton's passing. And to the soundtrack of this, Rick or Kat, are there other observations or things that you wanted to mention about your love of, of Clayton and making sure that these pieces get shared with the world?
Well, I, from my perspective, it's his incredible sense of humor that I find just delightful.
Robin talked a lot about Clayton's ease with his grandchildren and how much he doted on them and loved them. And I have to say that I got the chance to take my kids to the Museum of Wonders not long after it was opened in Crockett or reopened in Crockett. And apart from my oldest daughter, who must have been four or five at the time, was scared to death when the patient who sits up all of a sudden scared her to death. But she sat at the front counter with Clayton while Clayton sort of showed her things and told her stories. And it was incredible to me to see sort of that interaction with the next generation. All right, and you can see that Rick and Kat have brought a few other pieces of mad doctorology and skull and bones crucible, oh, and this distilling vessel as well. Incredible.
My argument is always that Clayton was a historian of ceramics, but also an historian of American humor, which has a varied and rich story to it. And he always had his finger on that.
Yeah, I would absolutely concur. And so he always had, I think, a uniquely American way to, I don't know, as a through line for all of the things that he was making and just, and talking about. It's hard for me to concentrate with those amazing and the sound, and the soundtrack. All right. So I'm going to go ahead and continue with showing some of the images, but I'm going to invite you back on, Kat and Rick, in a little bit. I will say probably in either 20 to 30 minutes, we'll bring you back on. So thank you for joining our call today.
Sounds good, thank you.
Cheers, Rick, thank you for bringing everything out for us. Okay, let's see, let me unpin. And I'm going to go back to sharing my screen. Okay, so here is Clayton during that tour. And we will talk about the Pyro sphere a little bit later. And some of these incredible sort of alchemist vessels. And it's amazing to me that Clayton's career had many different acts to it. But when you were actually in his environment, and I'll kind of argue that the natural environment for all of these tobacco spit alchemists, pieces and gadgets were really his backyard in Port Costa. And, you know, they were, when you viewed them at the, the World of Wonders Museum, they were one of many phases, but these particularly struck me when they were viewed in his environment in Port Costa. And for those of you who didn't know about Clayton's home in Port Costa, the Davis Professor Roy De Forest, incredible painter, who just had his incredible retrospective curated by Susan Landauer about three years ago at the Oakland Museum of Art. They lived next door and some of the original energy for the nut art movement was hatched over drinks or maybe other things like between the two of them at their adjoining compounds. And so that was a relationship that I think bore a lot of fruit over the years. I was, it also struck by his bloating vessels that were made from a local clay that was used in brick making. And then through Clayton's mad scientist additions, he was able to make the actual vessels sort of blow and explode. And his attention to detail in terms of considering the volume and the interior and the exterior skins of this piece, these pieces, I think, was crucial. And they are among some of my favorite bodies of work from him. Another little photo of the garage and the studio. Okay, so this is really what I, as a curator, wanted to pay some attention to and talk about. And these are things that wouldn't necessarily get the attention that objects would get in museum collections. And I think that Clayton's legacy as a performance artist is one of the most important things about his life and his work. And it was a very natural extension of his personality. Diana, you mentioned being a historian of American humor. And so all of these things that we're going to talk about were shot through with that humor. Literally, I'll talk about some of his enablers and collaborators when it came to these pranks. This, of course, is Clayton's patented cup that squirts liquid into the eye of the person who is sort of looking into it. And I think the way that he staged this photo also speaks to his attention to detail and being able to present something theatrically. So I'm going to start actually with showing a performance piece that Mike actually begins his documentary, which, with, which is the first artist in space. Mike, would you care to unmute yourself and introduce this piece for us and the footage?
Yeah, so this is the one at the very beginning of the film?
And then I'll show the, the follow up to it.
Right, okay.
Right, okay. Yeah. Yeah, First Artist in Space was something that we had available to view, at least the parts that I included in the film, were available because of the Betty's archive of video that she had kept and assembled, curated over the years. So I just want to say that first, which was, you know, that is, without Betty's archive, you know, I don't think the film would have come together quite, you know, quite at the same level. It really added that additional layer necessary for, you know, to get a good sense of Clayton's work through the years. As far as First Artist in Space, I would love to have had the footage from the Japanese game show film crew that were there that day. Unfortunately, I was not able to track that down. But we do have Betty's footage of this, and it's really a hard thing to set up. I think almost the work almost speaks for itself. I don't want to take up more time.
And I do want to put in another plug. I mentioned Betty's sort of documentarianism, if that's even a word. She has an incredible archive, and I'll put in another plug for Clayton advocating for himself. His website is the definitive trove of all of his work, and his performances are noted briefly and sometimes in depth on his website. And it's an incredible source of information about his career. But there is a section on the archive about Betty's films that she made over the years. And if there was a clay-related event in Northern California, you could be, you could bet that Betty was there with her camera. So I'm hoping to talk with the family a little bit about digitizing and making sure that these things are available as well. So without further ado, The First Artist in Space.
March 9th, 1987. Here on a grassy knoll, just outside the sleepy town of Port Costa, California. In just a few moments, we're going to launch the first artist into space. Clayton Bailey was chosen to be the first in the artist in space program. He will be launched into orbit along with a miniaturized potter's wheel and enough clay to throw a pot in zero gravity.
In all my years as a potter and as a sculptor, I've often wondered what it would be like if I could escape the limitations of my studio and of the gravitational pull on my work. And I'm really excited that today I'll have the chance to test some theories that I have about throwing pots in zero gravity.
Join us now for this historic moment.
All right, I do have the second, the follow up from the clip.
Preparing now for the launch. The artist gathers his tools and materials, picks up his lunch, gathers some cow patties, just in case there's time to do a firing in space. Farewell handshake. The rocket is closed for takeoff. Five, four, three, two, one. Miss fire, miss fire. The ship is still on the ground. Is the artist all right? Is he safe? Did we take off? What a mess. What a setback for art. What went wrong?
Okay, so that stunt, as many of Clayton's stunts, sons, other stunts, ended with an explosion, possible injury. But in a lot of these, or most of these, Clayton himself is sort of always the butt of the joke rather than making jokes at the expense of others. The production values, the amount of detail that went into this, I think, are characteristic of, you know, all of the performances and actions that Clayton had over the years. I want to talk about, this may be my very favorite Clayton piece, and it really is a long-term conversation and long-term performance. And in a certain way, this was where I discovered the prank performance side of Clayton. I'm a great lover of Craft Horizons magazine. And there is a 1970, maybe even late 60s issue of Craft Horizon magazine where there's a letter to the editor that was published that managed to get past the editorial. They were talking in some previous issue about sustainability and ceramics. And so Clayton Bailey wrote a very straight-faced article about internal combustion ceramics, which is, as many of us on this call know, an ecological process that Clayton created whereby he combined something like 50% clay with horse manure. And when it was dried out, you were able to light the actual pottery on fire, and it combusted itself and vitrified rather than needing external firing or kilns. And so his very straight-faced article, which assigned George Gladstone, was published straight-faced in Craft Horizons. And I would invite everyone to go to the American Craft Council's website, where you can see that and every other issue of Craft Horizons archived. But like any good ceramic artist, this is Clayton's test tile board that was displayed at the museum, showing the internal combustion ceramics and complete with labels and everything. I want to put in a plug, and I've mentioned that Clayton was an incredible correspondence artist. And he corresponded with the network of male art aficionados, M A I L art aficionados in California and beyond, and was really a hub. And when you go to visit his archive at the Smithsonian, a great deal of it is the correspondence. But this is part of Nut Pot Bag, which is an early zine. It was photocopied. It was created in 1970 or 1971 by the conceptual artist Lowell Darling, who would go on to be famous for running for governor of California against Jerry Brown. And Lowell and Clayton were very close and came up with a series of conceptual performances, including the world's longest strip slip trail, which would have been a tanker truck full of slip that did a slip trail from Southern California all the way to the tip of Northern California. But this is his book Nut Pot Bag that includes George Gladstone's letter on how to make self-firing clay. And you'll notice that it is on the Cal State Hayward Stationery. I also wanted to mention another frequent collaborator of Clayton's, and that was Victor Spinski, who taught at University of Delaware. Victor was a Vietnam vet, and he was an ordinance expert in Vietnam and was very good at blowing things up. And so a lot of that expertise translated to Clayton, and over the years, they did performances that involved explosives frequently. Another person who's featured in the Nut Pot Bag zine is Victor Sieranski, Victor Sieranski, a close associate of Clayton Bailey. And I think he may very well be on this call or watching as well. So Victor, salute you up in Regina as a part of the Nut Pot Movement. Diana, I was wondering if you would hop on and talk about some of his Caillithic works as performance art and the way that he would stage sort of public uncoverings of Caillithic works on beaches and other public places as they were discovered.
Well, I, I'm not fortunate enough to.
Let's see, I think, hopefully that was just your bandwidth and not.
Okay.
Okay, so you froze for a second.
Oh, yeah, I can't even understand my internet connection is unstable. My neighbors must be gaming again. They're rabid about eating up bandwidth. What I recall about, what stood out to me about Clayton, as Clayton would tell the stories of mounting these in the 1970s, was how he was savvy to make sure that all the local press had a press release so that he was creating tabloid-worthy events. And these would be reviewed in the Contra Costa Times and other local papers in Richmond. And he would actively incorporate his students as part of his stunts. And the idea was to take the frenzy for Loch Ness Monster, for Bigfoot, and bring it to California with, you know, pieces. There was a certain, I think, goalability of the era, especially with the launching of National Enquirer, the World Weekly News in 1979, et cetera, that he tapped into. And then, of course, I'm saying all this, and as I speak, I start to get all nerdy sounding and more complex, and now I'm structuring everything. And as we saw in the clip from the documentary film with the artist in space, Clayton was pitch perfect in imitating that and making fun of how I'm even speaking right now. So you put all that together, and he was a master showman at, you know, making people believe that you're just playing with their suspended disbelief, at least for 30 seconds to a few minutes, and getting everybody to go, oh, this really is a sea monster. This really is a sea creature. And then, and then their better instincts take over, and they're like, yeah, no, it's not.
And fast forward 40 years, and you can see, you know, the, the sort of birth of truthiness and being in a post-news world. It's fun and quaint to think back to the Weekly World News and, you know, when I think the public would, you know, consume these with a little bit of a wink or nudge, or when the topics were Bigfoot and the Loch Ness Monster instead of Pizza Gate and, you know, sort of right-wing conspiracy.
It was a more innocent time.
All right, so I'm going to, I'm going to move on to another thing. And I want to mention ceramic conferences and the incredible part that Clayton Bailey played in the ecosystem of ceramic conferences. So Josh Green from N C I C A, the National Council on Education and Ceramic Arts, is a frequent guest in these proceedings and is on these calls a lot. But Clayton Bailey was legendary throughout the 1970s, in particular, for proposing panels at N C I C A that involved performances. And he would do the Caca Conference once it was launched in California as well. And we can't forget Supermud at Penn State. But I think I maybe, I think I'm right that this was Clayton's very first sort of N C I C A performance, and it remains one of my favorites. This is his psychic ceramics performance. And I'm really fortunate to have this footage, because there is not great footage of this event. So basically, Clayton announced to the assembled crowd during these demonstrations that he had figured out how to psychically, without using his hands, center a cylinder and throw a pot on the potter's wheel. And so he used his skill with latex and air to make a centered cylinder of clay and a mold from it. And he made it out of latex and hooked it up to a compressed airline. And he covered the whole thing in slip, and I think probably connected it to his foot pedal and sat using his mental abilities and not touching it with his hands. And because of the air pressure, the piece inflated as the wheel spun. It was incredibly elaborate, but eventually a protester came up and exposed his flim flamery and put a pie in his face. So you talked, Diana, about this idea of American humor. I will confess to everybody, my father is, this is no surprise for a lot of people. My father is a semi-professional shrine clown and was sort of been the head of the shrine clowns in his area in Nebraska. And in clown humor, you always have to have the blow off at the end. So something, once the tension has been released, like a pie in the face, or everybody chasing them around. And Clayton, I think, very much knew how to stage this and work it into his performances. Mike, in your documentary, you have amazing footage of Clayton doing his bare hands raku. So it was a raku kiln that he created with something of a Betty Crocker oven light inside of it. But it looked for all the world like a real kiln that he could reach in and grab the glowing hot piece and was amazing at juggling those pieces and making us believe that he was actually plucking them from the red hot kiln with his hands. There was another N C I C A performance of these. These, this was not an N C I C A performance, but anytime Clayton Bailey would be brought in as a visiting artist, this speaks to the idea that he was always incorporating his students that Diana mentioned. And so this was his performance raku. So he would show how to make objects. He would talk actually about the science and the engineering of those objects. And then they would become animated through the raku firing. So Mike was able to find some of the footage and that came from one of these firings at a ceramic workshop. And again, I'm just going to let the word speak for itself. Mike, I want to salute you for choosing the right theme music for that piece as well. And when you would visit Clayton, he actually had a lot of the performance raku pieces on display. And it was a joy hearing him talk about the way that the pieces were animated by the fire. Here is a picture of Clayton and Victor Spinski together. I mentioned Victor's love of explosives. This was at a conference in Ann Arbor, Michigan, and it was called Mischief in the Ceramic Arts. And they, they talked about different ceramic pranks, sort of real and imagined. And if anyone in this crowd was actually in the audience and can talk to me, I've, I had both Victor and Clayton describe this to me. And like with many things, their stories diverge, and I have a hard time getting it straight. But it was related to the bare hands raku performance. But Clayton, I believe, liked to talk about the instability of kilns and in warning people. Victor had prepared, oh, I think they were talking about the organic clay and the self-firing clay. But they were doing a demonstration, and according to Clayton, they had mixed Limburger cheese and clay and had set it out in the sun to bake and get really funky. And then inside of the kiln had prepared a little explosive charge that propelled the stinky cheese clay out into the audience. I don't know how messy or not the audience did get. But there was an explosion, and they sort of disappeared and did not reappear until later that night when they showed up in casts and bandages at the party later that night. So if anyone later on wants to set me straight about the story and call bullshit, or tell me more about it, I'm always collecting Clayton and Victor stories. There's a picture of Clayton and Victor together at the Caca Conference, where I think their tomfoolery has. where I think their tomfoolery has obviously caused somebody grave injury. So this was, I was so happy when the San Francisco Chronicle Memorial for Clayton actually mentioned this piece, not quite by name, but this is the famous Esthetron performance at the NSEA Conference. And I think it was during the opening ceremonies of the NSEA Conference. And Clayton had spent months writing letters to museum professionals, and Diana, you'll love this, asking if they could borrow precious Ming basins and other things. This was a letter to the Nelson Atkins Museum in Kansas City. And Ralph Coe, the director of the Nelson Atkins, brushes him off, saying, when I first received your letter on February 28th, in all seriousness, I thought it was perhaps a joke that an institution which prides itself on a collection of great artistic quality would be asked to submit works of art to be crushed into fragments. So Clayton had asked that they submit a Ming vase to be crushed by his Esthetron testing device, which would test the compression strength of the ceramics. And therefore, I think, measure the quality of the ceramics as an experiment. So he says, in no way would we be willing to send a Ming Dynasty vase, blue and white, from the 15th century that could bring several hundred thousand dollars for you to crush. So nevertheless, Clayton prepared lovingly created tributes. They were carried in by uniformed museum guards, and they were put into this device in their compression test. You can see this blue or red and black Greek vase being crushed into shards by the machine in the name of compression testing. And there was really no detail that was left out or spared by Clayton in the creation of the Esthetron in the presentation and involved multiple people and involved narration. Clayton knew how to do production values. So Peter Held, you are on this call. I see you. And I would love you to unmute yourself and talk a little bit about Clayton Bailey's being a featured guest at Ceramorama at Arizona State University at the Ceramics Research Center. There was an exhibition of funk art from the museum's collection. And this was at a big gala to accompany the exhibition. And Peter, if you could give us a few memories of inviting Clayton as an honored guest for this event?
Sure. Can you hear me?
I can.
Yeah, so we had a exhibition, Humor, Irony, and Wit: Ceramic Funk from the 60s and Beyond. It was sort of the theme of the gala that year was 2004. And as you know, the gala entailed numerous events, fundraising event. So there was a live and silent auction. And we had a bunch of the auction works situated outside. So I invited Clayton to do a performance, and he brought some of his shatterware. So he would walk around with a box labeled Fragile. I don't believe we announced that it was a performance. It was, he just sort of mingled in the crowd. And he would walk around with these boxes, and then, you know, the bottom would fall out, and there'd be a loud clouder. And, you know, there was thousands of dollars of artwork being auctioned. And the response was twofold. I think the majority loved it, loved the humor of it. But it also horrified a lot of people, thinking that someone's artwork broke. So it was definitely a pure Clayton moment. And he was an important part of that event. He also serenaded the group with his Jewish harp, which was a lot of fun as well. So Clayton's work was featured in the exhibition. And it was great to have his presence there. We also did a panel that Peter Sills moderated. And I know Peter Vandenberg and Peter Shire were on that panel as well. So between all those people involved in the ceramic scene back in those days and the genesis of funk, it was really great to have Clayton's presence with us.
Incredible. And, you know, I stepped into Peter's position as the curator at the Ceramics Research Center at Arizona State University. And memories of Clayton in that particular Ceramorama Gala were frequent stories that were heaped upon me. So it just reinforced my love of Clayton. So Clayton could be relied on when he was an invited guest of something to absolutely bring in his wit, his planning, and his showmanship. I was on the NSEA board, and his activities in NSEA at NSEA were very important to me. And he was given an NSEA award of distinction, and he gave a closing lecture at a conference in Houston six or seven years ago that absolutely broke down, brought down the house and brought his work to a new generation as well. And so it gave me great pleasure to see that happen. Somehow, I have, I think, deleted the image that I had. Oh, no, here it is. It was just, no, it's not. I had deleted the image that I had of something else that was NSEA-related. And this is the last prank that I have to share. And it, again, ties into Clayton's teaching. And I know that we have students of his from Hayward and other places on this call today. But he published instructions in the NSEA newsletter on how to do a beginning throwing demo. And this was usually the first throwing demo that any student got. And Clayton would talk to his students about the science of clay and talk about the fact that there were was organic material in the clay, bacteria and other things that actually made clay into a living material. But he had figured out how to take a length of, a long length of thin rubber hose, and he would wrap it around a mound of clay and then put more clay around the outside and disguise it. And he would be showing the class how to center the mound of clay, but he will have already talked up all of the organic creepy crawlies that could live in the clay so that he has people a little bit on edge. And then he would be able to just nick that piece of hose with his hand while the cylinder was spinning at high speed. And all of a sudden, this snake would explode out of the clay. And so this wasn't just something that Clayton performed, but he passed along the instructions to performing it. And I know several times when I've spoken at NSEA, I've made sure that I handed this out as a handout. So to this day, there are still professors that are performing Clayton's centering clay exploding snake prank. Right, so Kat and Rick, I'm going to put you on notice, and I'm going to bring you up in a minute. I am sort of bringing to a close the section about talking about Clayton's performances. Is there anyone else? I'm going to stop my screen share here for a moment. Is there anyone else who'd like to come on and mention a particular Clayton performance or prank or add something to that conversation?
Well, I brought Clayton to Corpus Christi. Can you hear that?
Yes, I can.
And I had actually had gone to school in California in the 60s. And so Clayton was on my radar. And when I got a job in Texas, one of the first things I wanted to do is to bring him out. And he did a lecture where he brought his, he called it a lithometer. And he showed slides of Warren McKinsey's work, and then he would have it tested with the lithometer. And of course, it was bad. It never even registered. And then he would show slides of his work, and the thing would go off the chart, you know? Ding 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 ding. So that was a really wonderful experience. He came out and did that at our institution.
Oh, man, thank you so much, Greg. Others, would anyone, Chris Morgan or you?
My name is Stephen Headley, and there was, Clayton and I became friends when he first moved to California. And and that's a whole nother set of stories. But as far as his performance art, the first robot he worked on was one that he could actually get into and walk around it. He called it On Off. And he had a little on off switch on it. And he would go to openings, they would, people would hire him to go to openings of stores or things like that. And he used to get upset because people wouldn't take care of their kids. And they'd let their kids go up and push the on off switch and yank on things on the robots, which Clayton was inside of. And Clayton would tell people, you know, please keep the child away from the robot. I have no control over the robot. And it never went anywhere. So so Clayton made a penis head on a spring. And so when kids would go up and push the on button, this penis would jump out out of their face. Then the kids learned to stay away from the robot. That was the last time On Off was bothered.
Oh, thank you so much for that. And I believe Kurt sometimes used to perform as On Off as well. So a few things are coming in from the the comments. Robin writes that how frequently she would help grade student work if you were a student of Clayton. So please take note of that. I wanted to mention, if you do a search for Clayton Bailey on YouTube, there's a TV show on Amazing Inventions or something where you get to see Clayton actually making a jaw harp and demonstrating it. And it always makes me a little bit nervous when I see the footage of Clayton with his long mustache around the, what do you call it, the turning device? That was his one lapse in terms of shop safety. Other people are saying how Linda Fitzgibbon rightly points out how much Ai Weiwei just rips Clayton Bailey off. Some other great reminiscences are coming through the chat, so be sure that you chime in. So Kat, are you back with us? And are you able to share with us one final time?
Yes, I'm here. Can you see my screen?
I can. So everybody, check out the pyrosphere. I'm going to go ahead and pin your video here so that we can all see it. So the pyrosphere has now made its way to Akron, Ohio. Say hi. Sunny day. I think Akron and Syracuse share the fact that it is cloudy a lot of the time. But that's a perfect view. So you are all getting a view of the pyrosphere in action, and you can see the smoke coming up. So Diana, or if you would like to, Rick, can you tell us about the pyrosphere and the the science behind the pyrosphere?
Well, it's really a finely crafted instrument, a giant magnifying glass, and he's mounted it in the front here. We've got a perfect, clear day here in Ohio. The sun's just about directly overhead. We're peak energy almost for the season, for the summer. And it just focuses a beam of light on a, it's a cedar plank right now. And it burns, and if it behaves properly, you get smoke emitting from the from the mouth. Might have to adjust it a little bit.
And Diana, maybe you can chime in. I know that there were several iterations of the pyrosphere, and one of them was too successful and would just absolutely start to torch any that was put into it, right?
Yes, if I recall, Clayton was working with same, sort of, they were military-grade lenses that were used for spy planes that he managed to get his hands on. And and I believe there is, that is a lens, a really high-grade lens that is in that pyrosphere. But yes, the other one was so acute, it it incinerated everything.
Yeah, this thing actually creates, it creates a flame really very quickly. It generates a very hot flame. You just have to have the wood properly positioned on the on the focus of it. And this particular piece of wood has been burned already. You know, we had it working really well yesterday.
We can see the smoke coming up out of it, for sure.
It was a lot more aggressive yesterday.
When you would visit Clayton, he would use the same board, and it would just be shifted. And so in a way, it was sort of like a calendar of people who had visited him when he would position it into, and he would get that, and it would just steer across the entire plank.
Yeah, it was a really beautiful artifact. There we go.
There's an image of it.
And is this, is the plank, Rick, original to the the pyrosphere? Or is this a new plank that you've been?
No, no, this kit, we just broke, we just installed this yesterday, and so this piece of wood came with it. It was just burning this this area here.
Incredible.
Yeah, he's a real technician.
So I really meant this, the firing up of the pyrosphere to be almost a ceremonial capstone for our session this afternoon. Diana, I believe that, let me unpin Rick here. And I will actually pin your video so that you can show us the object that you have as something to remember Clayton by.
Yes, okay, I apologize for the messiness of my my interior abode. It's a work in progress. But let's see, can we see this? Terrible backlighting. This is my.
I think this is actually pretty cinematic, but tell us about your pop gun.
This is my, I envisioned just having a big military-style salute for Clayton with all the pop guns. So we could, and again, I do believe I enjoy all the joy of gun ownership thanks to this. And so with that, I want to salute a tremendous friend and inspiration in my life. Do no harm, but cause as much mischief as possible. So here's for Clayton, and this thing is amazing. And he can even give me a little stand for it.
Your cat really enjoyed that.
I'm so glad that's recorded. That's awesome.
Thank you so much, Diana. And Robin, if you're still with us, I'd love to bring you on.
Yes, I'm still here.
Okay. Thank you so much for being here, and I hope that you'll convey the spirit of this to family members and that you'll be able to share the recording of this with family members. Are there any final things that you'd like to share or things that we should know about memorials? Or it's very early going in terms of the family's plans, but are there any things that we should be looking for?
Yeah, what I'd like to do to celebrate my mom and my dad's lives is put together a memorial at the Port Costa School and the town that they lived in. They were a very important part of the the town, and they participated in many activities. You know, the talent show, the the car shows, the flea markets, obviously, as well as my father would host Clay Days for the children in town. So and he was also a volunteer fireman. Was a senior engineer and drove the fire truck for emergencies around the town. So again, pending a further date and time, we're going to try to put together a nice celebration of my parents, and I'll let everybody know.
Terrific. Are there any emerging sort of funds or places where people can send donations and well wishes?
You know, I haven't gotten that far.
I'll help to spread those things around when they happen. But just know from our part, I think, you know, everyone on this call can attest to the amazing things that Clayton brought to the table, both for the field and his personal relationships with everybody. And it was such a pleasure to be able to put together this reminiscence. I want to invite everybody to stick around and tell stories and to stay as long as you'd like. We can totally use this as a place. And I won't even, I'm going to leave the recording on for a while. And I won't even, I'm going to leave the recording on for a while. And so we'll keep hanging out together. But thank you, Robin, and thanks to the family. And thank you to everybody who came to sort of share your karma and your stories and your well wishes about Clayton and Betty.
Yeah, thank you all.
Right. Thank you. And that does it. I will say that the next week, we'll be doing a session with the teapot collector Karen Selwyn, who has donated over 60 incredible teapots to the Everson. And she's got a great eye and it's going to be a great pleasure to listen to her talking about her collection. And I should be actually in the museum next week talking about that. And then the following week will be the gala cocktail party. But stick around with us and share some memories of Clayton. So thanks, everybody. So anyone can feel free to unmute themselves.
Okay, I'll give it a try. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Pete Hackett. I should say, I've known, I knew Clayton since 1964. I was a student of his, a freshman at Whitewater for three years. And then I went to South Dakota. It was South Dakota.
Thank you. Sorry, North Dakotans. This is my Nebraska.
I was there and then came out to California, stayed with Clayton for a few weeks when I got settled in. And Robin was very small at that time. She was, anyways, I'll just, one little quick one. One night, this was still, of course, in Prokett, in what was then the area of the cafe, was still living. So that's where they were and I stayed with them there. And one night, very late at night and feeling both of us very, very good, we're sitting outside and Clayton got out a couple cigars. So we started smoking cigars. We started blowing smoke rings. And the smoke rings were getting bigger and bigger. At one point, Clayton says, okay, he goes inside, he brings out a shopping cart, a 50 gallon round cardboard drum that actually he got the liquid latex in for his sculptures. Set that up in the shopping cart or out on sidewalk. He put in a little space heater and we had this box of just really awful Indian incense, you know, the kind of was a box for 10. So it was just awful stuff. We put a towel over the front of the barrel and like a cannon aimed this down the street. Now he'd throw in like a handful of the incense into the thing we, onto the heater. We'd cover it up, let this build up. He had stretched on the back end, a piece of latex sheet, right? So it was a drum. And so we'd take turns, you know, he'd lift the towel up and I'd hit the thing, or he did it. Long story short, we were sending smoke rings, three or four foot in diameter, aimed at a street light down towards the sugar factory, halfway, halfway down the block. And these things were just beautiful in the night, just wafted out there. Okay. That's my quick story.
Well done. Amazing.
I have a story.
Please.
Yeah, I'm John Raskin and I, we would often go out and visit Clayton and we would play jaw harps. That's how I ended up befriending him. I collected jaw harps from around the world and I, he came up in a search and I'm going, oh, he's just, lives near me. So one session, I brought a jaw harp friend who lived in New Mexico, Bob Basaris out there and a tape recorder, not a tape recorder, but a little digital recorder. And Clayton liked to get into this 700 gallon ceramic vase that he had in his yard that he got from a, I think it was some, there used to be two of them at the entrance of some kind of construction supply company. But I guess one got broke, so he got the other one. So it was in his yard. And it was, I guess before they, it stored nitroglycerin. That's what the jug was, 700 gallons of nitroglycerin. But so he liked to go crawl inside of it to play because it was a reverberant space. So the three of us crawled into this, you know, 700 gallon vase and played music in there. And I end up releasing it as a recording. It was called Caolithic Music, Sounds From A Pre-Credulous Age, borrowing from his idea of what the caolithic age was.
I would love to get a copy of that recording if you could send me a note.
Oh yeah, I, it's, I have it on my Bandcamp page and I'll post a link to it. It's free. You can just download it.
Terrific. Thank you so much.
Hey, John and Garth.
Yes.
We actually have copies of that CD in the museum gift shop in, at the Bailey Art Museum in Crockett.
That's great to know. Yeah.
Do you want to say anything?
I guess so.
Okay. Welcome.
Hi. Hi, Pete.
Am I on?
Oh my gosh. Introduce yourself, please. I did not-
And I'm an artist too. And I worked with Clayton in 1974. We made a couple of rather ambitious clay sculptures.
Epic.
Loved it. Gosh, what can I say? There's really no anecdote, except that we had heck of a good time.
And we have several of his pieces.
We have several of his pieces that he gave us too.
Yes, we have.
We have a masturbating penis head, which is in our bedroom. He's been doing it for, I don't know, 40 years and he's not getting tired. Let's see, what else we got? We got several things like that. I got a pop gun too, a gift. He was a wonderful artist and I really enjoyed knowing him. And I'm pleased to see this little performance you're doing today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. It's such an honor to have you on the call and, you know, I would-
We couldn't figure out how to get ourselves off, so I'm sorry that we're up there.
No, no worries. I, yeah, I gave the Mad Doctor pieces slightly short shrift today in talking more about the performances. But, you know, Sam Parker, the gallerist, was on and he helped-
Oh, yeah.
-one of those pieces in a major collection. And you are woven into the tapestry of not art.
I'm pleased to be in there with Clayton. We had a great time for two years.
Thank you so much, Peter.
You're welcome.
My absolute favorite piece in the exhibition, the collaboration piece.
Thanks. Thank you.
Now, what do we need?
Do I mute? Excuse me. Does everybody know Greg McGregor down here? I see he's on the line.
How do you, can anybody hear me?
Perfect. So you just have to talk.
Okay. Well, I'm an old friend of Clayton's. We met in Whitewater, actually. We were both teaching at the university. And when I left for California, I thought I'd never see him again. But there he shows up a couple of years later and we ended up being office mates at the university at Hayward and collaborated on a bunch of stuff. When they blew up the female astronaut on the shuttle, he and I cooked up Barbie on Mars. Couple of artists in Southern California gave us a bunch of Barbie dolls to various artists and said, do something creative. So we built a rocket, put her in the rocket and had a shuttle disaster of our own. The thing I remember about Clayton was we'd cook up a script. I'm going to do this, you're going to do that. He would go way, way beyond the script with costume, props, details I would never have thought of that added so much to those stunts. Another one was the Crockett rocket. We're trying to make a rocket bicycle that would get everybody to work quicker, you know, because of California, the commute is a problem. And he had a long commute. He commuted from Crockett all the way to Hayward, which must have taken an hour and a half. So we cooked up this rocket bicycle so that we could all get to work quicker. And again, he, we worked on a script and he would be creative beyond that script. In fact, a friend of ours, a friend of ours who was at Whitewater, the department chair who also was in California, said, you can never trust Clayton. He will go beyond the pale. He will, and he did. He cooked up a miniature rocket bicycle instead of, I was going to do the big bicycle. But that was the thing I remember about him. He was into detail. The guy would think of things I would never, ever have thought of. It added so much. Very fond memories. I saw him in his robot, in his robot costume. He'd show up at the factory in Port Costa, in the back of a pickup truck and his kid would get out with a remote controlled box with an aerial on it. And Clayton's inside this robot suit. He'd get out and he'd kind of stand there making mechanical noises, which were pre-recorded on a tape recorder inside the suit. And he'd just sit there and all of a sudden he started moving in jerks. And of course, by that time, hundreds of kids, everybody's around him putting quarters in his stomach to get a postcard that would spit out. Detail, detail, detail. That's what I remember about Clayton. He was a dear friend. He would make more ceramic pieces in a year than I'd make photographs. Unbelievably productive.
Absolutely. So while we are conscripting people, I noticed that, I mentioned him earlier, but the Los Angeles gallerist, Sam Parker, is on the call right now. And if you don't know about the Parker Gallery in Los Angeles, Sam Parker is a young gallerist and he is doing more than almost anyone that I know to spread the word for Clayton's artwork and to build a new generation of collectors and enthusiasts for Clayton and other people's work, like Maya Peoples Bright, who are in Clayton's orbit. Sam, do you want to come on and talk a little bit about-
Yeah. Well, just as, first of all, thanks, Garth, for putting together this incredible memorial today. I mean, it's just amazing to see all these clips together and photos and to hear everyone's recollections. It's just been so fascinating. I think one thing about Clayton's work, obviously, that so many people have commented on is his sense of humor, you know, which is really just such a crucial, I think, entry point to his work and allows it to have this really unique mass appeal to so many different walks of life. I mean, anyone who's been to the Bailey Art Museum, you know, would experience, but, you know, all of the schoolchildren and groups that they would have visit. But, you know, also his practice as a whole, I think, is really just sort of an incredibly rigorous, you know, conceptual project, kind of under the guise of this sort of, you know, traveling roadshow, you know, folksy kind of sensibility. But really his work, you know, has incredible appeal to any, you know, like the most high-minded intellectual critic, curator, scientist, fastidious crafts person, I mean, anyone, just a very, very unique, you know, range of audience for his work that is pretty rare for a fine artist. So I think that's something that, you know, we'll always remember and appreciate about his work.
The British have such a good word that we don't really have in American parlance, which is a one-off, like someone who is a complete original, who sort of breaks the mold. And Clayton is certainly a one-off when it comes to the art.
Absolutely.
Would anyone else like to step up? Kristin Morgen, I see that you're here. Can I, can I nudge you to say a word or two? So Kristin was a student of Clayton's and of course now is a Southern California-based sculptor of renown.
I was a student of Clayton's at Cal State Hayward from about 90 to, well, I hung around after I graduated. It was just Clayton said, if you hang around and do things around the shop, well, you can stick around and make clay and, and make your work. So I was there from like 90 to 96, something like that. And Clayton was all I knew of ceramics. And I went to graduate school at Alfred. And I remember it was so, everything Clayton delivered to us was always delivered with a very straight face. And so you just really never knew if he was pulling your leg or, you know, telling you some kind of truth. And, I mean, it was all truthful. And so I just, I just came to accept really everything that he said. And, and I felt like ceramics was just, I was also, I studied as a painter and everything in ceramics was so folksy and the people in ceramics were very different. They kind of like, they had to be around because they needed the equipment. And there was a refrigerator in the ceramics studio. There was an oven there. There was like cooking and things like that that went on. And painters were just like smoking cigarettes and drinking coffee. And so anyways, when I went to graduate school, I told Clayton, I says, Clayton, I got into Alfred. And I didn't know anything about Alfred when I went to school there. I just thought it's a school for, it's a graduate school and they were going to pay my way. And they were in New York. I had no idea where in New York they were. And Clayton said to me, he says, oh, well, that's good. I hope, I hope you know your chemistry. And I didn't really know what he meant by that. And, but when I got to school at Alfred, I realized just how different of a teacher Clayton was. And he would, he would involve his students in so much. I think he got bored sometimes. And so he would invent these contests. And he said, everybody, we have to, we're going to have contests and everybody has to try and throw the smallest pot that you possibly can. And he just, people would sit around with toothpicks and needle tools and, and try and throw these little pots. And, and then he, he also had contests to have us make geyser bottles too. And, and it was always like, you kind of had to try to make it do some spectacular tricks. So if it could shoot up the most volume of scalding hot water into a crowd, that was ideal. Or if it made noise, there was a friend of mine who went to school and he made a little, a little car. And he took the pot out of the kiln and then set it sideways in the car and it made like a jet stream and made the car shoot across the sidewalk. And people had all kinds of risque kinds of things and things that made noise and whistles. And, but it was, it was always so exciting to be a student there. And I think the thing that I love so much about Clayton is that, well, for back, lack of better ways to say it, he really liked to have a lot of weird people around. And he attracted them and he was willing to let them kind of do their thing. So as strange as Clayton was, there were always stranger people working in the studio. And, I mean, there was, there was this one old woman, she was, she was delightful. And everybody called her Flo. And she, she always wanted to make tiles and vases that were dedicated to Isadora Duncan. And, but she would call everybody toots. And, you know, she, and there was another old woman there, she would just, she would work like crazy, you know, like she would sit down for like 10 minutes and produce like 50, 50 babies. And at some point Clayton had told her, Catherine, you really have to go easy on the clay. The clay was- Because the clay was, was free to the students. But he was just concerned that she was using up so much of it. And he says, put a little bit more thought into them. And, but he was really willing to let everybody kind of like do their thing in whatever way that they wanted to. So that's one of many things I appreciated about him. But, yeah.
It's incredible to look at Clayton's legacy as an educator. He did not leave behind a bunch of Clayton Bailey clones, as if one could. But you can see the varied things that all of his students have gone on to do out in the world and the art world. And it's a great testament to the way that he taught. Thank you so much, Kristin. All right. So we could probably do one or two more people if anyone wants to step up and express a remembrance or an anecdote. I've still got the recording on, so you'll be recorded for posterity.
Hi, this is Vicki Gunter. I was a student of Clayton's for a very short time, but I was 18. And this was in 1968. And I'm now 70. And he, he was just such a marvelous eye-opener for me. It was at Diablo Valley College. And he took the entire class to his home and studio at the time. It wasn't a museum yet. But we walked in and there were pieces that were, Betty says, oh, yes, those, those are molds from Clayton's penis all over the walls and fried eggs on the walls. And, you know, peeing dogs as you walk past them. And, you know, the belching clams. And then we walk into this other room and this giant penis starts inflating. It was made out of latex. And it was like eight feet tall. And so, you know, it was just so fabulous. And I ended up going on to become a professional dancer. And, and, but then with gentrification and all of that, I went back to ceramics. And Clayton is just always in my heart as I, as I work. And I was doing an artist talk at Blue Line Arts. And I mentioned the penis and the bomb and all of this and the powerful influence he had on me. And afterwards, this amazing woman walks up to me. Every piece of clothing she has on, she painted herself. And it was Maya Peoples-Bright. And she said, I painted those penises. It was just, you know, and I was like 60-something when this happened. It was just such a fabulous full circle.
Amazing. I want to point out that Sam Parker is also doing a lot for Maya Peoples-Bright and has an upcoming exhibition of her work as well. So another great person in the orbiting the Claytoniverse. And it's a pity, you know, latex is not an archival material. And so most of Clayton's latex things have been lost to time. It would be amazing to be able to go back in time and view them.
Right. I actually called him in the early 2000s when my daughter was in college. And she was making a fashion statement using latex. And I called him and asked him if he had any suggestions for her about how to work with it and all of that. And he goes, well, it won't last, you know? And then I, he said, you studied with me when? And I said, 1968. And he goes, oh, my God, you make me feel so old. So, anyway.
Thank you so much, Vicki. All right. So I have one final slot if someone would like to. Yes. Nice. Yes, you're on.
Okay. Just, I'll make it quick. But I did an apprenticeship with Clayton back in 1977. And here in Port Costa. And I used to be a student of Victor Spinski at the University of Delaware. And that's how I met Clayton, was when he came to Delaware to do a workshop. And he had always said, oh, if you ever get to California, look me up. So I was in the process of transferring all my credits from the University of Delaware to the University of Oregon, but was giving somebody a ride to California. So I dropped her off in San Francisco and I called Clayton and he said, oh, you've got to come out to the house. So I drove out and they had just finished filming a movie. There are a lot of Japanese people running around with, with microphones, you know, getting sound effects from birds in the trees and stuff. And everybody's running around like mad. And Clayton invited me to stay and spend the night. There was a little cabin in the back part of the property. And the next day, I was getting ready to leave. And he said, well, you know, before you leave, how would you like to stay for a couple of days and, and work for me and I'll, I'll pay you? And I said, sure. So we, we spent a couple of days doing projects of his. But it was just this magical working relationship where everything, you didn't have to discuss anything. You just automatically, instinctually knew what to do. And it was so smooth and fluent that it just worked out great. And he invited me to move there and be his first apprentice and stay at, stay at the house. And I lived in the little cottage in the back. And Robin, Robin was 16, I was 23, you know. And Greg McGregor, I remember you. I remember shooting filming of blowing up Studebaker's out front.
Were you there that day?
Well, I lived here. I lived here with Clayton, Betty and Kurt and Robin. And, and, and when I found out that Clayton had had his, had a stroke a couple of years ago and that Betty had passed away, I, I didn't know how to get in touch with Robin. So I sent an email to Clayton's email address and hoped that someone would intercept it. Robin got it and she contacted me back and she said, I said, you know, I'd do anything for your dad. You know, your folks did a lot for me, you know, and I really appreciated it. So I'm, you know, I'd do anything, you know, I can to help. She said, move back to the house and move in with Dad. So that's what I did. I moved back from Delaware, pulled my Airstream across country and moved into the house, stayed with Clayton. And I was, I'm still here. I'm here at the house. And, and it's, it's been a really wonderful year of being able to spend it with Clayton and try to make his days as happy and fun as possible. So, yeah, I'm happy to be back here. Really nice to see all you people. I've talked to some of you on the phone. So, thank you all.
Thank you for taking care of him. That's amazing.
Yes.
Well, he was a special, special friend. So I was happy to do it.
Well, I think that's a perfect place to wrap things up. And, you know, that, I was so, it gave me such solace having visited Clayton in rehab to know that, you know, he was so fully present and that his sense of humor is intact. And to know that he was, and I knew that he was surrounded by people that he loved to the very end. So, thank you. And I hope that for those of you who got to be on the call today, that everyone comes away with this picture of the many circles of people that Clayton touched, from geeky curators to jaw harp enthusiasts, to people who discovered him by Yelp and made movies. No one ever came away from a contact with Clayton Bailey the same. So this memorial will be archived. You can go to the Eversons website to find it. Thank you all for preserving your memories. And, yeah, please stay in touch. So, thanks again, everybody.
Thank you.